Okay, it is six o'clock. We will start our meeting. Chief Day, will you please lead us in the flag salute?
Yes, ma'am. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Sienna.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Lucy.
Here.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Here.
More pro Tim Trent.
Here.
Along.
Here. Thank you, Sienna. So we have some presentations and proclamations tonight. Our first one is National Police Week and Mike Lucy is going to read that one and present that for us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. National Police Week is May ninth through the fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Whereas in nineteen sixty-two, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation which designated May fifteenth as National Police Officers Memorial Day and the week in which that date falls as National Police Week. And whereas law enforcement officers are guardians of life and property, defenders of individual rights of a free people, soldiers in the war against crime and dedicated to the preservation of life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas it is known that every two days, an American police officer dies in the line of duty. Our community joins with other cities and towns to honor all police officers everywhere. And whereas the city of Fortuna desires to honor the valor, service and dedication of our peace officers. Now, therefore, Su Long, Mayor of Fortuna, proclaims the week of May ninth to May fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, to be National Police Week and call upon all citizens to give special honor and sincere appreciation to the police officers of this city by deed, remark and attitude. I further call upon, or she further calls upon, the citizenry to make every effort to express our gratitude to the men and women who make it possible for us to leave our homes and families in safety each day and returning and return knowing they are protected by people willing to sacrifice their lives if necessary to guard our loved ones, property and government against all who would violate the law. This was signed this third day of May twenty twenty-one at the city of Fortuna in the state of California. Signed by Su Long, Mayor of Fortuna.
Thank you, Councilmember Lozey, Mayor Long and Honorable Counsel. On behalf of the men and women of the Fortuna Police Department, I proudly accept this proclamation. It is truly an honor to have the opportunity to serve this great community. I did want to remark between May ninth and May fifteenth, staff will be wearing the traditional morning bands over the police issued uniform badge. And that will be in remembrance of those heroes who paid the ultimate sacrifice and who lost their lives in the line of duty. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike and Casey. Appreciate it. We have our next proclamation is National Bike Month and Mike Johnson has agreed to read that one.
In recognition of National Bike Month, May two thousand twenty-one. Whereas bicycle travel is an effective means to improve air quality, reduce traffic congestion and noise, increase physical activity and improve public health. And whereas bicycling is part of the solution for addressing transportation needs, limiting impacts to infrastructure as well as conservation of energy. And whereas bicycle commuting benefits both employees and employers through better employee health and fitness, reduced vehicle commuting, parking and healthcare costs, increased employee productivity. And there exists a strong relationship between the city of Fortuna and the Fortuna Elementary School District to create safe routes to schools. And whereas a bike park and bike skills course has been built within the city of Fortuna at Newburgh Park. And whereas the city of Fortuna is involved in planning and building the John Campbell Memorial Greenway Trail along Strong's Creek, which would increase bicycle commuting and recreation opportunities for Fortuna residents. And whereas the city of Fortuna has received statewide recognition for extending the school zone and reducing speed limit to benefit all schools. And whereas the month of May is National Bike Month, which promotes the bicycle as a means of transportation and recreation. And May is also Clean Air Month, which promotes air quality. And whereas Bike Month Humble features a number of bicycling events for riders of all ages and skills to enjoy throughout the month at various locations. Now, therefore, Su Long, Mayor of the City of Fortuna, does hereby proclaim May twenty twenty-one as National Bike Month throughout Fortuna and urge all citizens to support and participate in activities that contribute to the health of the community and the environment. Signed this third day of May twenty twenty-one at the city of Fortuna, state of California. Su Long, Mayor of City of Fortuna.
And is Cameron the one accepting this? I don't see anyone from the public here.
Yes, I am.
Hey.
Thank you. Uh, really wanted to say good evening to Mayor and City Council. Uh, really appreciate you taking the time to, uh, you know, create this proclamation once again, year after year, uh, to promote bicycling as a means of transportation and health and exercise. Um, so yeah, May is Bike Month once again, and, uh, not only am I the Parks and Recreation Director, but I am a citizen of the city of Fortuna and I prefer to commute to work via bicycle. Um, and I also commute with my daughter every morning and drop her off at school at Ambrosini via bike. Um, and just to echo, uh, what's already in the proclamation, you know, it's, it's, it's really beneficial, I think, for my family and for others, hopefully, to consider commuting to work, um, as a means of transportation. Um, for me, it's a huge benefit because again, not only do I get to travel to work, but I get to exercise simultaneously. And I'm not the kind of person that really likes to go to the gym after work, after a long day of work. It's really difficult for me to uh, get the energy to then go into the gym for a couple hours. So for me, I get to ride my bike in lieu of going to the gym. So, uh, it's a double benefit there. Um, but it's also a good way for, you know, me to, to teach my family, uh, and connect with my family through that shared activity and increase our lifelong health benefits. Um, you know, if I were to drive to work, it's not that much longer than if I were to bicycle. So I figure why not just ride, um, and, uh, you know, save, save the, the greenhouse gases and get a little bit of exercise, as I mentioned. So, uh, and really my bicycle commute is not much longer than, than getting in a vehicle and driving to work. So why not? Um, and that provides me with about thirty minutes of daily exercise every day because I actually ride my bike home for lunch as well. Um, and then, you know, when I rack up the miles, you're looking at about forty miles a week worth of bicycle commuting. So that's like riding from Fortuna to McKinleyville. So I get a good amount of exercise just commuting to work. Um, so I think it's again, great to influence not only my family, but the citizens to think about the responsible ways of, of transportation. That doesn't have to involve driving. Uh, just a couple stats about a third of total greenhouse gases in the U.S. comes from vehicles. Um, it's the highest contributor of greenhouse gas emissions in the U.S. and most of those are single passenger vehicles. Um, and cycling is a good positive way to offset our carbon footprint. Um, not only that, but bikes are a lot cheaper to maintain than cars are and bikes are really easy to work on. So it's, it's, uh, easy do it yourself kind of project to keep your bike maintained. Um, and honestly, if you live and work in Fortuna like I do, there, there's really no reason not to, to commute to work by bike. And I do hear some parents say, you know, well, it's, it's dangerous, you know? I don't want to put my kid on a bike and have him ride to school. It's dangerous. Um, and you know, i- it could be, um, however, you know, I think I'd like to see, uh, in particular, more people walking and biking and driving less. Um, but a lot of that does fall on the responsibility of the drivers. The drivers really need to be aware that there could be people walking or there could be people riding their bike. Um, I see a lot of distracted, distracted drivers when I'm commuting and I've had some close calls while commuting to work. It's, to be honest. Um, but I think it's good. The more we educate and encourage cycling, um, that, that carries over or trickles down to drivers as well, taking on some responsibility to encourage people to safely be able to ride their bike, uh, or to work or school. Um, and I did want to point out that the city has made a large investment on infrastructure to support bicycling in this community. Um, we've got really good bike infrastructure for commuting as far as, uh, bike lanes go. We've got Roanoke Road, School Road, Fortuna Boulevard, long stretches of road that have a, a single lane for bicycle commuting. So I really appreciate that. Um, and we really support the Safe Routes to School program and do what we can as a city to make sure that kids can get to bike or get to school via bike or walking safely. Um, and as mentioned in the proclamation, we do have a brand new bike skills course, oh, at Newburgh Park over by Hardball Field Number One. So that's an easy way for people to, uh, get their children or get comfortable with riding out on the road. That's what that course is designed for, to get kids comfortable with riding out in the street safely. Um, and of course, uh, we do have the newly improved bike park over at Newburgh as well. Um, so I wanted to encourage folks to check out the bike skills course and the new bike park, uh, at Newburgh. Um, and I really wanted to thank some people as well. Melanie Williams, who's a bicycle advocate, um, and has run some bike businesses here in the community. She donated seven bikes recently to Fortuna Parks and Rec for us to utilize. Mostly we utilize those during uh, our summer camp, summer fund and kitty camp programs because we do a bike day quite often throughout summer fun. So if children show up without a bike, then we've got a backup bike. So everybody can participate. Um, I wanted to thank, uh, Department of Health and Human Services, Public Health for, uh, funding the bike skills course over at Newburgh Park and also providing us with free helmets that we can hand out to kids who may not be able to afford or have their own helmet so that they are riding safely. Uh, and then thank the bike park volunteers, especially Curtis Sealy and Stephen Pearl from Wall and Construction, who really helped make that bike park improvement project happen. And I will say that that's one of the only pop tracks in the state of California. So it's pretty neat that Little Fortune has got one of the only bike park pop tracks in the state. Um, a couple of things to look out for. We will be having a Bike Month Scavenger Hunt soon. So we'll put out details on Facebook and in the Parks Office, uh, for that scavenger hunt. So I'll have details on that. That'll be a family oriented scavenger hunt throughout town. Uh, we also were planning on hosting the bike rodeo, our first bike rodeo last year, and then again this year, but due to COVID, uh, we're going to put that off till twenty twenty-two. Um, and then in the meantime, also, we do have these, uh, free Bike Month Humble, um, placards that people can put on their bikes. You just put, get a couple ties and put these on the front of your bike to show your support for Bike Month. And you can pick these up at the Parks and Rec office. They are free. Um, so show your support. Thanks again, City Council for honoring bicycling here in Fortuna and get on out there and in that fresh air and hope to see more people on their bikes out there on the road. Thanks again.
Thank you, Cameron. Okay, our next pro- uh, proclamation is for fifty, in recognition of fifty-second Annual Municipal Clerks Week, May second to the eighth, twenty twenty-one. And as most of you know, Sienna Emmons is our city clerk and she is amazing. So whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs and the annual meetings of their state, county and international professional organizations. And whereas it is appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Su Long, Mayor of the City of Fortuna, do hereby proclaim through May eighth, twenty twenty-one, as Municipal Clerks Week and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerks, Sienna Emmons and Buffy Gray and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Signed this third day of May in City of Fortuna, state of California by Su Long, Mayor. So Sienna, if you want to say a few words?
Yes, I will. Mayor Long, council members, I'm honored to accept this. Um, I'm proud to be a city clerk. I love clerking for the city of Fortuna and the best council in the county. Um, but as I accept this, I just want to acknowledge Buffy Gray, our deputy clerk. I want to acknowledge Katie Schmidt and Kathy Rexford and Alex Service, who all in some regard act in a capacity as clerk for their boards or commissions. And I just have a lot of respect, I think, for clerks and recorders worldwide, even though we try to make it look easy. It's, it can be a challenging position. So thank you for this. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Sienna. For all you do, we appreciate you. All right, moving on, we have Emily here to talk about earthquake warning California. She has a presentation for us tonight. Emily, thank you for joining us.
Thank you so much for having me and thank you for the opportunity to talk about earthquake warning California. I am hoping to screen share without incident. Um, hopefully that's visible to everyone. Great. Um, so thank you. We are very excited. In October of twenty-eight, of twenty nineteen, California launched earthquake early warning within a state. And we've kicked off a campaign in October of twenty twenty to the Don't Get God Off Guard campaign to help spread the word about these resources. Earthquake warnings are really great, but they're not helpful unless people know how to get them and what to do when they receive them. So this new and innovative technology, actually, the primary method of delivering them at this point is through cell phone notifications. And part of the goal is to give people a warning before they feel shaky. We don't predict earthquakes, but what we can do is use the time period between the first seismic waves and the more damaging ones that move a little bit more slowly to calculate and estimate the magnitude, the location and estimated shaking. And we all know that Fortuna and Humboldt County in general is pretty seismically active. Um, especially offshore, and we are getting better at translating the offshore movements into what they will be onshore. Um, we can, also wanted to highlight that especially for city government, these early warnings can help provide critical notification to first responders to make sure that they protect themselves so they can help respond to instances. We don't do this effort alone. We do it so in partnership with the California Department of Conservation and the Geological Survey, USGS Geological Survey, the Berkeley Seismic Lab and Caltech. We have approximately, we will have approximately eleven hundred and fifteen stations that will be installed. And we are currently working towards that. All the ones on this map that I'm displaying are, the green sensors are actively reporting real time seismic sensors and the orange are ones that are being installed or upgraded throughout the state. We are actively working on Humboldt County and doing more in the area. It is challenging, as you all know, sometimes telecommunications are a little bit more tricky along with the geography. But it's a very big focus that we continue to work towards. Um, want to just briefly go over the three main ways that people and anyone can download the app and can turn on these earthquake notifications. The first is the My Shake App. It was developed by UC Berkeley with funding from the state of California through the Governor's Office of Emergency Services. And it provides audio and visual warnings through a pop-up message. It's available to download for free from both the Google Play and Apple App Store. And we also, it's important that people have their location services turned on. All of these alerts are distributed based on the expected shaking the user will feel. We also want to again reiterate, this is not predictive. This will only tell you once the first waves have been sensed. But before you feel shaking, but we also say if you feel shaky and drop cover and hold on, just due to your location in relation to the epicenter. This, another component of the My Shake App is it actually is doing active research. There's an area between the epicenter and the first areas that we can notify just in that timeframe of how long it takes to calculate and estimate the ground shaking. But by using phones and crowdsourcing the phone's very minute movements, we can actually decrease that no warning sound. And part of this is involves data collection about your phone movement. We want to be very clear that there's no personal or identifiable data collected from users in this process. Just notification about when there is an earthquake and how that data has moved a phone. We also combined forces with the USGS and Google and opt, in August of twenty-nine of twenty twenty-two, launched Android Earthquake Alerts. Which is where they've actually incorporated earthquake warnings into the operating system of Android phones that are newer, have been updated. And this is a simple switching of phone settings and does not require an app download. And this system is po- is powered by the same sensors that are positioned throughout the state that are part of Earthquake Warning California. The last one is wireless emergency alerts. We're all pretty familiar with that, but want to make sure that people know that you can now get earthquake warnings through WIAS. These are the same things that provide extreme weather alerts, amber silver alerts. They now provide earthquake warnings. We wanted to identify that there are different thresholds for the warnings. If you download My Shake App or have Android alerts, it would notify anyone if there's a four point five magnitude or greater where people are expected to feel weak shaking and those are who'd receive the message. With wireless emergency alerts, they'll only be distributed if there's a magnitude five point oh earthquake or greater and only to users who have their phones in locations that are likely to feel light shaking. So it's a little bit of a distinction that we just want to be clear with so that the public knows what to expect. We also really want to do a good job of reminding people what to do during earthquakes. It's often we have parents who are the most well informed because kids do drills in school, but to drop cover and hold on or lock cover and hold on if you use a wheelchair. The main focus of almost all these efforts is to get into a secure space so your head and neck is pretended for, protected from falling objects. This is the same reason why getting in the doorway or triangle of life are somewhat outdated concepts. Because if you're in a doorway, not only can objects hit you, but the door can actually hit you in the process and it's not any more structurally sound and it's not any more structurally sound than any other part of your home. So really try to find that sturdy table where you can protect your head and neck. We just wanted to, just want to leave you with kind of three basic steps. When to download the My Shake App, which is free for both Apple and Android, to adjust your phones and needs, to make sure you can either get Android alerts or Wireless Emergency Alerts. We have lots more information available on earthquake.ca.gov. And we also thank you so much for the opportunity to share about the program here. We also have additional information on the website, like toolkits, social media packets, and are very happy to do additional presentations to help get more word out there. As I start off by saying, earthquake warnings are great, but they are not effective unless people know where to get them and how to use them and what to do when they receive them. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Emily. Does anyone from the council have questions?
I would ask which, which app she thinks would be the best for us.
The My Shake App is sponsored by the state of California, and we continuously work on improving the user experience and making sure that it's gotten, that it is protected and that your information is secure on the backend. So that's the one that we are recommending, although we also recommend that you download any apps that are available. We just want to make sure, there are some earthquake apps that tell you about past events, which is slightly different than giving you an earthquake warning that can help you protect yourself in the moment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Well, thank you, Emily. We appreciate the information and appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Moving on to oral comments from the public, does anyone that has joined us on Zoom from the public wish to comment? Or is anyone wish to call the number on the screen and you will be allowed to address the council as well? We're going to move on to the consent calendar while we're waiting to see if anyone calls in. We have two items on the consent calendar, city council minutes and report of dispersments. Does anyone wish to pull anything? Seeing none, we need a motion. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Mayor Protem made the motion and Councilmember Lacy will second.
Okay. Roll call, please, Sienna.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Lacy.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. Sienna, do we have anyone from the public with hands up or calling in?
I see no raised hands, and there's no comments requesting public comment at this time.
All right, we will close public comment and move on to our first item of city council business. Authorized participation in the California Intergovernmental Risk Authority effective July 1st, 2021 with the grant to the workers' comp program resolutions 2021-14 and 2021-15. Staff report, please.
Yes, our city clerk and risk manager will be providing the staff report.
Thank you, council members and Mayor Long. I put together a pretty brief PowerPoint to kind of run through this, and I hope that it outlines it in a way that is really clear and straightforward. We're looking to authorize participation in the California Intergovernmental Risk Authority in regards to the workers' compensation program, and this would be by adopting resolutions 2021-14 and 2021-15. So currently, the city of Fortuna participates in a risk pool, and I'm going to presume that most of you know what it is. It's also referred to as a joint powers authority. It's currently a group of cities. We contribute to a shared fund and it pays for liability claims, worker compensation claims, and it also provides other risk management services. Our pool happens to provide our medical insurance as well. The pool is considered self-insured, so instead of purchasing insurance through a commercial party, we are, again, use those collected funds and are considered self-insured. And REMIF is the pool that we are currently a part of. It is Redwood Empire Municipal Insurance Fund. I know these are a lot of acronyms, and I know you probably know what they sound like. You don't have to know all of the words or what they mean. There's not going to be a test. But it is kind of important to understand that REMIF, the pool that we've been part of, is going to merge with another larger pool that's PARSTAC, and it's the Public Agency Risk Sharing Authority of California. And we're going to become California Intergovernmental Risk Authority, or CIRA, which is much easier to say. And council approved this on November 16th of 2020. It wasn't by resolution at that time, but just kind of to bring to your memory, it was by adoption of the CIRA bylaws and JPA. We also adopted an amended REMIF set of bylaws and JPA, which allowed us to retain our current medical insurance. So CIRA functions as an extension of the city. It's governed by a board as REMIF is, and the Board of Directors is made up of members from all of the cities that participate in the pool. So the Department of Industrial Relations plays a role in this, in tonight's action because to continue our city's participation in the workers' compensation program and to move that self-insured program from REMIF under the CIRA umbrella, we have to do a couple of things for the Department of Industrial Relations. We have to submit an application that is subject to the approval of the director, and it needs to include two resolutions. The first resolution, which you can see both attached to your staff report, is the authorization of participation in CIRA in regards to the workers' compensation program. And it also authorizes staff or the city manager to execute any documents that are necessary or appropriate to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city. And then the second resolution, you can see just by looking at it, looks a little bit different. This is an actual attachment to the DIR application, and it authorizes the director of the DIR for a certificate to self-insure our workers' compensation liabilities. So with that, at this time, staff is recommending that council adopt both the resolutions pertaining to the workers' compensation program. And at this time, if you have any specific questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Sienna. We'll open public comment, and while we're waiting for public to comment, does council have any questions for Sienna?
I just have one regarding the purse liability sharing. I'm figuring from all appearances that it would be a small group, and I mean, a small employee pool with a large group. And that, I was just wondering how that was split up or if we knew what the rate was.
Sure. I don't know actually what the rate is, but I can speak to what is happening with the current unfunded liability. So we had basically two different pools, REMIF, and it came with unfunded liability. And we have a second pool, PARSTAC. It came with unfunded liability. And we also had REMIF staff that came with its own unfunded liability. So what was proposed and what was decided by the board was to keep those three sets of liabilities separate at this time. And then anything that's incurred under the umbrella of CIRA moving forward would be a new set of unfunded liability. So for CIRA, there hasn't been any established unfunded liability. And for those pre-existing employees, they are going to remain separate in their pre-existing pools. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you.
Do we have any other questions from council? Any comments from the public? I see no hands. Do we get any phone calls, Sienna?
I don't see any members of the public. I see no raised hands.
Okay, so we'll close public comment, and if we have no more questions, entertain a motion. Looks like we need two separate ones.
We'll take two separate ones, please.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-14 and read by title only.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, Sienna.
Resolution 2021-14, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, authorizing participation in California Intergovernmental Risk Authority effective 7/1/21. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lacy?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes.
All right, we need a motion for the second one.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-15 and read by title only.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, Sienna.
Resolution 2021-15, a resolution authorizing application to the Director of Industrial Relations, State of California, for a certificate of consent to self-insure workers' compensation liabilities. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lacy?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. All right, you guys need to up your game a little bit. You're taking way too long. Okay, moving on to our second item, we have authorized the city manager to approve a contract order for Witcherch Engineering for the police facility remodel project. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Long. I'm going to share my screen here real quick. I think you could see it at this point. So the recommended, the recommendation to the council is to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract change order for additional architectural services for the police facility remodel and a supplemental budget request in the amount of $20,000. A few things have changed since the original scope of work was approved. The original project included architectural design for just a most basic remodel that we could do for a 5,650 square foot building that the city purchased at 2,600 Newburgh Road for the purposes of the police facility. The exterior improvements in that original scope of work were limited to accessibility, signage, and approximately 80 square feet that was intended for evidence room. The phases of project included planning and programming, schematic design, construction documents, and obtaining a building permit. During the course of the project, a number of things came to light. This is going to be a facility that has to last for some time, given the city's budget limitations of doing the long-term desired building, which is probably about 15,000 square feet. But we did, as we're going through the schematic design and the programming phases, decide that the building addition should expand by, from 80 square feet to 747 square feet. And that was really to handle additions, in addition to the evidence room, the armory, and then also a computer server room. Paving the entrance of the park, paving the entrance to the building, and then also the parking areas where the police would be parking within the secured area. And then covering parking to the rear of the building to allow for loading, unloading and transfer of suspects and equipment. And then establishing a covered walkway from the front entry to a conference room. And even though it sounds like an addition, as you'll see, that was intended to be able to allow the conference room to be able to be used for a soft interview room and eliminate the need for a safe passage inside and not having people in secured areas. We also added concrete masonry walls around the exterior of the building for aesthetics and security. With the additional paving, there are stormwater treatment requirements and a small land, a simple landscaping plan. The addition of a radio communications tower and foundation design for that was not originally included in the original scope. And then also the addition of electric gates in some of the planning and conduit runs, et cetera, for those. A little bit about the budget background, the original fee from Witcherch Engineering was about $100,000, and we staph really tried to keep it low and ultimately negotiated a $55,000 contract. Latest estimate that we have from them was about $1.6 million for the building without any of the additions that I just spoke about. The design of the projects being funded by a combination of general fund dollars and Measure E dollars, which are also general fund dollars in the amount of $30,000 and $25,000 respectively. One of the things we have been looking at is the city will be receiving American Rescue Act funds in the amount of approximately $2.3 million. So one of the things that we're hoping that the council will do during this year's budget process is designate approximately $2 million towards the construction of this building. So some of the budget impacts as a result of this change, the cost, most simply, the cost would increase by about $20,000. The funds would have to be transferred from general fund reserves to CIP 0981 if approved, and the total design fee would increase from $55,000 to $75,000. I just wanted to point out an error in the staff report. I think I used 9401 for the CIP number, and that's our Roanoke Creek project. I think I just automatically write that whenever I'm doing a staff report. We've done so many CIPs for that project, but the correct number is 0981. I wanted to take the opportunity tonight to kind of, to share some of the plans and just give the council idea of what the project is looking like. And again, these are drafts, and even the ones I'm showing you, there are a number of changes that are there. But this is the existing police facility that we're talking about remodeling, and it's at the intersection, see, Roanokeville Road at the lower left, and then Newburgh Road wrapping around the facility. And this is existing building footprint in the light tan with the contemplated additions being in the more olive color. This is going to change quite a bit. One of the things that we're going to be changing significantly is, right now, a number of people enter from Newburgh Road closest to where the soccer fields are, and they park in this outline area. We're going to be putting a fence there, but we're not going to pave or improve that area. We're going to pull that back and put a fence a lot closer where this dimensioning line is and scaling that back, and then reconfiguring this driveway to be the main entrance for the police facility. And that's much the way that it is right now in its interim configuration. And then there'd be a stormwater LID basin along the front. In some of the renderings I'm going to show you, it's just a landscaped area, but we'd have to do the low-impact development design here, and then we omitted the landscaping all the way along the back of the building. And you can see this is where a concrete masonry unit wall would be. Just to give you an idea, this is the existing lit floor plan of the building in black. And then you can see the red is where the major structural changes would be on the inside of the building. So the existing wall and perimeter, again, black along the outside, and red would be where walls are demolished. This big X here, that's the swimming pool, that's the hot tub. So that would, that would all be at the same elevation and be connected, and we'd have one giant floor area to be able to work with. You can see this shows where some of the bathrooms would be included and added, and some of the pool equipment demolished and some other changes. Here is the floor plan. That's our current working design concept. And there's a number of things. We really tried to preserve as much of the existing building as we could and do a minimal renovations, but still meet the needs of department. So one of the things, you can see the entrance up here at the top left would be the same. You'd come into the lobby. You'd have a records clerk in an entrance and a secure counter, CSO office up near the front. You'd have the bathrooms in this kind of blue area here. One really important part of this was really making sure that we had a suitable dispatch facility. Our dispatchers have really been at a disadvantage in a small, really underserved dispatch area. So we have a large dispatch area. You can kind of see the light outlines. There'd be one, two, three, four workstations, which would add two more workstations for our dispatchers. And it was really important for us also for them to have quick access to the restroom and kitchen facilities. That's something that they've said they needed. And so we're happy that this design really has a door straight out, and they have those facilities close by and convenient. There's a briefing room. We have detectives' offices. This is the IT room that forced one of the expansions. And then there's going to be an emergency generator and then an armory. You can see the patrol would largely come in from the right-hand side, and there's an, you know, there's an equipment room there. There's a safekeeping for things that are confiscated or held for people, and then there's a bike storage area. In this side, this is more kind of the administrative wing. You have the office supervisor, chief office, lieutenant's office, FTO office, and then one vacant office that would be right here. We don't have intended use for that yet, but ultimately this would be the secure evidence handling area, and then this would be the evidence vault. Where the patrol officers come in, there would be an entryway. I think it's right here. You have a booking restroom, and then you have a booking area here. So a lot of the in and out and dealing with suspects would be here. One of the aspects of the project I spoke about was we were trying to figure out how to be able to use this conference room in this area for both the interview room and then for conferences and meetings. And one of the things we were struggling with was, you know, people will come off the lobby. Say you have a victim come in, how can we get them to that area without getting them into the secure area, which is more in the brown? And so we ended up adding a covered walkway over this area. And also, I forgot to point out, the live scan right here would be off of the lobby, and then a public restroom would also be right here off the lobby. So the real public interface to this area would be here, where you have live scan, the restroom and the lobby, and then the front counter, and then you have this covered walkway that comes up for a conference room if you're doing a training event or something like that. And here's a few of the 3D renderings that were provided from our consultant, and this- And this just gives you an idea of what it would look like. And, and so this is actually Ronerville Road here. On the, I'm looking at the top right image, but on the, on the right-hand side, it's kind of Ronerville Road and Newburgh Road running up along the left. And you can see the landscaped area, which would actually be depressed and be let, stormwater treatment. You can see where a potential sign location is. But the thing to note is that the exterior of the building doesn't look radically different, except for the, you can see the covered walkway here. That's the one change that we're making on this side. And then you can see kind of a isometric kind of aerial view on the left, top side. Again, this landscaping would be LID. The landscaping would be omitted here. And then, excuse me, and then here's a, you can see where the radio tower would be at it. We're going to reconfigure it. We didn't like seeing the trash enclosures that close to the front of the building. We're going to find a new spot. But in the lower left, you can see where we'd want to add a freestanding, pre-engineered structure to be able to have officers pull in if they're handling evidence or bringing in a suspect to be able to have that area be out of the rain and then paving the parking lot instead of having a dirt parking lot. The lower right is a picture of the same thing, but you can also see the concrete masonry wall and how we want to integrate some landscaping with that. So that's the, the basic idea for the building. With that, that concludes my staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions as council has them.
Hey, well, public comment while we're taking council questions. Any questions from Eric?
Hey?
I just have a comment.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
I'm really happy to see that the police facility remodel project is moving forward. It can't happen fast enough as far as I'm concerned. And I'm also really glad that we're using a local firm, Witchurch Engineering. They do a great job, and we, we want to keep that as local as possible. So I'm, I, I think this is a good move and like to see it move forward.
Anyone else?
I, I agree that we need to move forward on this. And I also am happy to see that we found a funding source that will allow us to have the lowest impact on our budget.
Anyone else? I don't see any hands up from participants. Siana, do we have any phone calls?
I don't see anybody wanting to participate from the public.
All right, we'll close public comment. If we don't have any more questions or comments from the council, we can entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract change order for additional architectural services for the police facility remodel project and approve a supplemental budget request in the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second, Siana.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. All right, moving on to our last item, a discussion item, talking about our hybrid council meeting options. Staff report, please.
So yeah, I'd just like to say our city clerk has also been heading this one up, and it's, it's kind of a trippy, tricky topic. And so I'm really pleased that Siana has been working on this, and, and she will be presenting this discussion item, or at least leading the discussion and giving you what she's found so far.
Thank you, Mayor Long and councilmembers. So again, I put together a brief little presentation. I think sometimes it helps just to, to visualize. There's a lot of moving pieces to this one. And so just some thoughts for your council to think about as we're deciding where we're going to go. This is council meetings as they look today, and then looking, you know, to the near future here and what the hybrid options are going to be. So there's been requests from the council, and I know everybody's very eager to get back into an in-person setting. Council requested that staff look into this, and, and, and believe it or not, I've been looking at it for quite some time. I think every clerk across the country has been looking at this. And depending on where, you know, people are located, they're, they're taking different steps and measures to go about it. Currently, our county, it, under the blueprint for safer economy, is in the orange tier still, or the moderate. And California Department of Public Health doesn't allow for indoor gatherings unless you're using face coverings. And then the city is also bound by some emergency regulations that are set in place by Cal OSHA and currently prohibits city employees from being inside facilities without a mask unless there are specific exemptions. And so I know, you know, right off the bat, that's probably not what everybody wanted to hear. And I wasn't thrilled about bringing that back to council and saying, no, you know, we can't, we can't move to in-person meetings. But, you know, there are some other things that we need to consider. And even though our options are limited, there's a little bit of movement in there. Council can consider remaining on the virtual platform right now. You could also consider allowing staff members or council members that wanted to, to participate in the council chambers wearing masks. But that would still need to incorporate kind of this hybrid approach. And we'll, we'll get to that a little bit later, because the hybrid approach, while it sounds relatively easy, there's some complications that I have found, you know, other municipalities and, and Fortuna also running into. There is some, some light at the end of the tunnel here. There has been information circulating that the blueprint for safer economy could be completed or done with by June fifteenth. I'm not sure exactly what that means. I'm not sure that anybody knows what that means, but it could mean that regulations are changing. This last Friday, I also learned that Cal OSHA released some information that they could be revising their emergency regulations at the end of May, which could really change, you know, what regulations we're following in terms of masking indoors. And so some of the things that I wanted just to discuss tonight, again, really, this is just a discussion item and, and something for your council to consider. I put together kind of two draft options of how we can migrate to hybrid meetings if we reach a point where we're allowed to be inside without masks or certain members, if with certain distancing, could be without masks. And also, we have to take into consideration that regulation could change if people are fully vaccinated. And, and I don't know, again, what that is going to look like, but there are things to take into consideration when we're, we're considering how we're going to move forward. So the first option is pretty straightforward. You know, it's basically council members and staff are present. Masks would be dependent on regulations at that time. We would allow members of public to enter and exit. You know, we would have routes clearly marked. We would make sure that we adhere to all social distancing. Members of the public would have to wear masks at all times. They could make their public comments, and then they would leave the chambers. This would be a little bit challenging, because members of the public who came in to participate and then left again would need some type of device, a phone, or, you know, an iPad to be able to follow the meeting from that point on until they were able to return to a point where they're able to see it via television, et cetera. But some of the things that, you know, council could consider at this time and think about is, would you want members of the public to enter? And how would you want to install plexiglass up on the dais and for staff members to allow a little bit more of a safety measure? And maybe that would also play into vaccination rollout and could play into mask regulations changing. So maybe there's going to be some parameters put in place that if we can provide that type of barrier between the participants in the room, it could allow for us to meet in person sooner than later. So that's kind of the outline of the first option. The second one's not too far off. It's, it, it is almost all of the same things, except under this option, we would allow the members of the public to come in and actually participate in the meeting. They would, a certain number of participants would be able to remain. We would obviously adhere to all social distancing. Under this scenario, doors would be open. There's going to be more people from, you know, potentially different households participating in one space. So trying to create the most amount of, you know, airflow and really making sure that we follow, you know, the capacity regulations that are in place at that time, or make a decision based on what keeps people safely distanced. Council would want to consider the same things, you know. Would you want public to remain in the room for the meeting? If they do, how many people would we allow? And, you know, would we have audio issues if we had the doors open? Would council want plexiglass in a scenario like this? So keep in mind, under both of these scenarios, I'm also going to be working, you know, with Access Humble and other municipalities to actually reach the hybrid platform. So this is kind of just how it would look in real time. This doesn't really address the technical difficulties that, you know, we're dealing with, and I'm going to get to that right now. Well, I guess I should point out that I did make a point of contacting a listserv through the City Clerks Association in California. Like I said before, every clerk is really trying to jump through hoops to, to make this seamless and get their councils back in person. I did attach the responses. They're not great, but you can kind of see a trend in what people are doing. I, I do know that a majority of them, if they're meeting in a hybrid scenario, they are currently masked. Their staff and their council members are currently staffed. And I did confer with Access Humble, and currently there are no other jurisdictions that they're aware of in Humble County that are having their meetings televised, that they're, where they are holding hybrid meetings. They're, they're all virtual still. So just a kind of update on the local level. Now, next steps. Can you hear me now? I mentioned there are some issues, you know, the technical difficulties. And one of the main things that was brought to my attention by Access Humble, actually just today, is that there are some really, really big limitations with the audio switches that we are using, not just our city, but other cities. And, and the main limitation, if I could explain it just very simply, is that our audio system is set up to pick up our voices from the microphone, and then Access Humble picks up that output, and they make it available to the public through the television. The issue is that when we try to put a secondary platform like a Zoom platform into that and allow for the audio output, so our voices from our microphones, to feed clearly through that Zoom platform, and then conversely, for the people participating via Zoom to have their voices picked up clearly and then transmitted not only to our audio system for the members that are present to hear, but also for the television to pick it up and broadcast it all clearly. So it's created some pretty big limitations. And just to bring this to a close, you know, we're, I'm planning on working closely with Access Humble. I'm planning on reaching out to other jurisdictions locally to come up with the most cost-effective and efficient way to really address those audio limitations. And I think in conjunction with what you decide tonight, in terms of what you would like to look the meeting, what you would like meetings to look like, excuse me, and the goal to have a solution in place by the middle of June, anticipating those changes. I think we can try to have our goals aligned and see if we can get to a point where we've got the hybrid audio piece figured out. And then you provide direction on how you want the meetings to flow, how people are going to participate, what that could potentially look like.
Thank you, Siana. Anyone have questions for Siana?
Do we? I was going to say, do, did Access Humble or any of the other agencies have an idea of cost for the hybrid meeting model and the audio changes and such?
Sure. So after talking with Access Humble today, the first municipality to kind of take the leap in trying to tackle this was the city of Eureka, and they contacted a consultant in the Santa Rosa area. And I know that the numbers are in the initial stages, because they, they are trying to figure out all of the components. But going that route, what I was told is they've been quoted between fifteen and thirty thousand dollars to convert their audio system in their chambers. And, and I, and I will say, I don't know that that is the most effective and most efficient way. I really would like to meet with Access Humble, and I really would like to meet with the other jurisdictions. It seems logical to me that if we worked with Access Humble, instead of every jurisdiction finding their own route to do this, it would be much more efficient for Access Humble as well. And they were very appreciative of that suggestion when we had that conversation today. So I, I think that if we worked together and tried to find something that Access Humble really can facilitate and, you know, is affordable, that is logical to me.
Would this equipment be transferable to our regular meeting time down the road? Or for conferencing with other agencies or consultants to where if we made this investment and we, things go back to normal, whatever that is, in January, that this investment would still have use?
Right. That's a good question. I, I can't predict what it's going to look like in the future. I'd like to think that maybe a hybrid Zoom call-in approach is going to be the new norm. I, I don't know. I, I definitely am hesitant to commit fifteen thousand or thirty thousand, for that matter, of, of city funds to try to make this work if it's only going to be for a limited duration. So I would like to be just very cautious about figuring out what is going to be the best approach and, and learning those pieces. You know, the technical pieces are kind of where we're challenged. And Access Humble has also informed me that there's not a lot of consultants that specialize in this type of broadcasting. You know, it's kind of a, a mixed media, if you will, where you're allowing sound to come in through two different locations and then not having the, the feedback that we experience when we have multiple computers in one room or a computer next to a microphone, and we're trying to amplify something coming through a computer without creating feedback. So I'm, you know, not a speaker audio person, but I, I certainly am willing to ask the questions and try to figure out wh- what can we do to make this functional, but not have it be, you know, outrageously expensive at the same time.
I'm all for waiting till June fifteenth and see what happens before we spend a bunch of money and make a bunch of rules and do a lot of things. I don't know how everyone else feels, but that's where I'm at.
I, I would be comfortable waiting until June fifteenth, just to see what the state's going to do. But I think that at that point, if we're still limited with pretty much what we're doing Zoom-wise, I think we need to take a look at that then, because right now, there are city councils that are having meetings without masks, having a certain number of the public involved. Looked at several of the council meetings from the list that Siana provided to us. And some of those, Beaumont, I believe, they have partitions, but no masks. The city of Palo Verdes, that is one that she didn't provide to us, but I've looked at their meetings, and they have plexiglass partitions and no masks. And they are providing some public input, in-person public input. So I, I think there's ways to do that. I, I would not want to sit at the dais wearing a mask. And I don't think any of the rest of us would, I don't think. But I think come June fifteenth, we need to be ready to move forward with, with some of these things and looking at in-person and looking at what kinds of costs and, and maybe fifteen thousand is an awful lot of money, but we've got issues that'll be coming up in the future that will require, I think, in-person public meetings that we want to get feedback from, from our citizens. That's, that's.
You can buy an awful lot of plexiglass for fifteen thousand dollars and arrow stickers on the floor.
Yes, you can.
What Mike said was, was a suggestion that I was also going to make, is if we just had plexiglass up on the dais between us and not have to wear masks, we could use our microphones, and it would publicize that way. And then if we had people in the audience that sat six feet apart with their mask, and if they could come up and talk to the microphone, you know, and while they were there, I don't know if they could take off their mask to speak in the microphone, and then just run the meetings like we used to, where people can phone in. And so we don't have to have a whole new audio system. We can use the one that we've used in the past. But we'd have to wait till the fifteenth and see if that's, you know, something that we could do. But that's another option.
I think what Siana was saying, though, they're not going to go back to television, which is what our microphones are set up for. They're still going to do Humble access the way they're doing it. Is that right?
Well, what we have to take in consideration is that some members of the public may, may not want to participate in person. And we can't really force that. So what we have to do is make our meeting open to the public. And to do that for somebody who may not want to go again. And to do that for somebody who may not want to go against, you know. Recommendations from the California Department of Public Health or Cal OSHA for that matter, we have to be able to accommodate that. So to do that. We have to provide a platform by which somebody from the public can still call in, whether your council's in person with staff or not. And we have to be able to do that in a way that allows for them to make their public comment, for you all to hear it. Respond if necessary and for other members of the public to hear it. So that's where the technical component comes in. Even if we could get around, you know, we don't want to have the Zoom platform anymore. We still have to make that available for the public.
And Sienna, um, correct me if this isn't right. Even come June fifteenth, if the state says we can go ahead and have uh uh open meetings, no masks. Um, but we still have to accommodate the, the public. With the Zoom call-in or whatever, um, th- then, you know, we're not gonna have much of a choice. We're gonna have to take that extra step in my mind and move forward with, with our public meetings.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with that. I think we will have to take that extra step. I just don't know if that extra step is gonna be the same route that the city of Eureka. Took. I really think that we can, you know, work with Access Humboldt, but yes, we are still gonna have to make that hybrid platform available. Uh, at, at this time and I, I'm not able to predict, you know, how long that's going to be. What I do know is that. The California Department of Public Health is still saying no indoor gatherings without masks. And Cal OSHA is saying no employer in the state of California has their employees inside any buildings unless they're masked. So until those regulations change, if we're adhering to those recommendations or regulations there. You know, Cal OSHA's emergency protocols, which could be changing at the end of May, but those are really, you know, the constraints that, that I see right now. And, and Ryan, I know he's on the call right now. If he has something more that he wants to add in regards to. Open in public meetings, I, I'm, I'm, you know, more than, more than welcome to have his input there.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think, Sienna, I think you, you summarized it well. The, the issue and the interesting part that I think a lot of jurisdictions are. Looking into is how long is the governor going to keep the emergency orders, allowing the exceptions to the Brown Act to remain in place? I suspect that they'll probably last throughout the summer, uh maybe even into the fall. Um, because the virtual meeting um requirements without those executive orders are pretty onerous. You know, each, each of you would have to open up your house in order to be in your house to do a virtual meeting under the current Brown Act rules without the executive orders. So I suspect that the council will have plenty of time to continue to rely on the virtual platform. Um, you know, just keeping in mind that currently we do not have to allow for the public to enter. Um, the chambers if you are all in there uh doing an in-person meeting so long as, as Sienna mentioned, we have. The Zoom platform fully available, um and integrating that with our existing system is gonna be the, the tricky part, so.
Does anyone else have any other comments, questions?
So it sounds like wait until June fifteenth and then let's see how the rules may change and then reassess.
But I'm thinking, is that what everyone else is thinking?
Yes.
Funny, okay. All right, Yana, for your uh research and your work and. Here's just frustrating. Let's just not even talk about it. Moving on. And we, our next I, discussion item is a cannabis planning assistance merit.
Yeah, so this is a discussion item and really what I wanted to do is just get council's direction. A little bit over a year ago, the council directed me to, to. Develop a workshop and um go to the public and consider whether or not the city should update its cannabis ordinance. Um, then COVID nineteen hit and then we put it on hold because at the time the coun- the council felt that it was important to have an in-person meeting to really get. Uh, input from a broad cross-section of the public. And so that's really what our goal is, is to hear from. All Fortuna residents, what they think the right thing is to do. Um. The cana- cannabis industry is highly regulated and includes several sectors, including cultivation, processing, manufacturing, distribution, testing. And um more recently, the council um had the opportunity to view a number of these different types of businesses. And one of the things I've been thinking about lately is how best to proceed from here. Uh, if we were to operate in a virtual setting. Uh, one of the things that we could do is we could develop a program in a, in a, in an online um public forum to review the issue. One of the things, there's a lot of challenges with that. It's more difficult, I think, to have uh to really to get meaningful public input and, and. Get a sense, more importantly, of what the public is thinking about those changes uh during an online meeting. So. I, you know, um, one of the things I thought would be useful is to be able to use a consultant to assist with some of that. I've worked with Rob Homeland at Plan West Partners. I formerly worked with Rob at GHD and he's, does a really good job of. Getting public input, helping to get the word out. And he's also very familiar with the development of the ordinance. Uh. He's worked for cannabis businesses. He, he has a pretty good handle on what the nature of the industry is in Humboldt County and. Now as a consulting planner, I think he's uniquely qualified to be able to help us um put together a program and, and get public input. We, we don't have a uh budgeted line item for this. It's possible that I could use funds from. Uh, city manager contingency and then we have very, a few different um. Funds that have consulting fees that would be appropriate for this document, but we could, we could cobble something together and possibly with a little bit of assistance. But I guess I wanted to get the sense of two things. One, does the council want to proceed with this in an online format? And if so, would the council be willing to? Um, does the council think it would be important to get a consultant and really improve the quality of the meeting uh or not? So. That's where I'm at and I, I guess I just wanted to see what the council's take was on that. If I had to estimate the effort, I did receive a scope of work from Plan West and it's somewhere between six and eight thousand dollars if they took on a, a majority of the work related to the meeting. Um, but of course, uh even just helping with the presentation, uh possibly having the city attorney help draft an ordinance, we could keep those costs down. So. Even just spending a few thousand dollars would get us some assistance to uh, you know, have a better uh public meeting organization. So that's all I have. I, you know, I'm open to what the council thinks. Do we wanna proceed with that now in an online for- format? Uh, do we wanna wait? And if so, would the, if we wanna, if we wanna proceed, would the council be willing to um? Yeah, I don't need authorization for a small amount because we have those funds, but you know, what's the council thinking? Maybe comfortable with for funding the effort.
Well, I don't wanna do it online. And if we're that close to June fifteenth, I think maybe we could go ahead and wait and see what happens. I just don't really think we're gonna get the input from the public online. We're gonna get your computer savvy people and we're not gonna get your. Older citizens, your longtime residents, um, I don't know. I don't wanna do it online, but I, what do you guys think?
I agree. I, I think that um we ought to table this until we can have more input from. Um, the general public in, you know, whatever forum, whether it's River Lodge or. Or Runner Park or wherever. Um, I think we just oughta not spend money on this right now especially.
My thought was we could actually start working on the program a little bit so we're prepared, you know, when April fif- or Jim fifteenth comes. And if we can have a meeting, then we can have it, but I don't think we should not do anything until that time because then it's gonna be another four to six weeks before we can get the program. Done. So I don't think it's a problem to start working on it. I don't wanna spend six to eight thousand dollars. Um, to do it, but I think that we can start working on some of the stuff that we wanted to put in the presentation. So we are somewhat prepared when we can have a meeting, but I agree, I, I wanna have a regular meeting, not a Zoom meeting.
I'm, I agree with Tammy. If we can get the presentation outlined. And a format for having public participation, well, we should, we can start work on that. But I also agree that it needs to be done in person. And if we can just get ready. Once June fifteenth gets here, we'll know whether we'll be able to have a public open meeting. You know, if we can have something in the open air, uh we have places we can do that at, but this summer. And it'll give us a chance to get the public's perception and uh what their idea is and what they're looking for. So I'm, I think we can move ahead with the planning stage of it.
I agree with the Tammy and Mike, well, all, everyone else. Um, I'm interested to. Start the conversation, but I'm willing to wait till June fifteen to see if we can do something in person, because I think this is too sensitive of. Of a subject to do it without the proper input uh that only virtual allows.
All right, so we're all in agreement on that. So where are we at on hiring a consultant and what do you wanna spend? I personally, and I'm on TV, but I'm gonna say it anyway. I wasn't impressed by the last presentation we had by that consultant. So I'm a little hesitant to do any other presentations.
I'm hesitant to, at this point, to spend any money on this until we find out um whether we can do this in public or not.
Well, the, the only downside is if we don't pay someone to help the merit, it's gonna a lot. A lot's gonna be on merit. I did offer to help him. I'm not sure how much help I am, but um, we don't wanna overload merit, but we also don't wanna. Have some kind of a consultant that we don't really agree with the content and the presentation and all of the things, so. Anybody else wanna chime in?
I, I think I'm hearing the council and I think having more time to work on it a few months, let us kick it around at the staff level. For a while, see where we get in the next couple of months as we get closer to June and then bring it back for the council to review and again, just like the. Just like the hybrid meetings, we'll bring it back and give you an update of where we're at and uh make a decision after we see the new guidelines.
Well, and I think we can have a special meeting and discussion workshop type. Um, to discuss where you are like on your presentation. If you get down the road and you aren't sure. You know what I'm saying? We could talk, talk about it before you finalize everything.
Yeah, that, that sounds good. And the other thing is it'd be nice to, you know, really explain for the public. At this point, the council's had a pretty good. In-person tour of some of the types of facilities. And one of the more challenging things was that I wanted to be able to convey. What those businesses are really like to the public, because I think a lot of people just, you know, see the new storefronts or see the outside and not a lot of the public has. The ability to see the inside of these and really understand how these businesses work. And, you know, that's the part that I, you know, I think is. Gonna take a little bit of time is to almost do like a, a virtual tour of those type of, of facilities or not, or just, you know, a lot of photos and just trying to. Let people understand, you know, how these businesses are, what the regulations are like. And I think there's a different perception out there than. You know, what you might experience having been there. So that's one of the areas that I was looking for help, but, you know, we'll.
And several of the people in the places that we toured said they would be willing to come and do a presentation or speak to our council. So I think that would be beneficial as well. Just having firsthand information from people who are in the business, doing what they're doing, how they run their business, you know. I was impressed with a couple of them.
Okay, well, I, I hear you and staff can certainly start working on that and even lining up speakers and see if they can present. Really kind of a um, you know, a show and tell of what their business is like and what it's about.
Okay, be a good one to talk to.
Well, I, you faded out, Tammy. What'd you say?
I said Nadeline would be a good one to talk to, to get some information from too.
Yeah, I would certainly reach out to her. She has offered to help in the past and that. I just feel like I haven't been doing my job. It's taken so long and I know there's been some reluctance to do it on the online format. I don't like letting things sit around so long. But um, that's why I brought it back for the council to discuss.
I see Diana turned her video on. Diana, did you wanna comment?
I did. Thank you so much for having me. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Hi, Diana Rios, Fortuna Business Improvement District. I guess I have two questions related to this. If the conversation could happen, uh, well, I guess my first question is how is the council feeling about cannabis just in general? It, it doesn't sound like you're super open to it if you're not willing to have the conversation started with the Zoom. And so I, I asked that you consider two options is doing a virtual Zoom now, so we can have that conversation and start the process going. And, and then possibly do an in-person one in June where you're really getting both sides. If, if the, if the thought process is really that. You know, the community wants cannabis to be in our community. But the older generation in our community doesn't want it and we're not giving them the opportunity. Maybe let's act, let's hear from both sides of the story and possibly doing two different formats to kind of accommodate. So that. That would be my one recommendation. Um, and then my second part, um regarding um the consultant. Um, we've sat through a lot of economic development and presentations with um that consultant. He's really, he really does know economic development. So whether, whether he, um. He was a consultant on something that wasn't related specifically to cannabis or um economic development. I, I ask. And as the, one of your economic development leaders in the community that you please consider. Rob um for this project, because I think that he really is knowledgeable. He knows Humboldt County, he knows our area. And he knows this industry. And so I just ask that you um don't rule him out yet and, and that you use the experts that are experts. Um, for a reason. So I just, that would be my only request is that you do both, um, an in-person and a virtual. You get both sides. The people that are resistant and the people that are for it, and then you utilize the consultants that really know the industry. So. Sorry for my bedroom. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Diana. All right. So do you feel like you have your direction merit?
I do. I just wanna make sure that the public has an opportunity to comment. I know Diana jumped on there, but typically you ask for public comment. I just wanna make sure that. Um, if anybody's out there and they did wanna comment, they get the opportunity.
Don't see any participants with hands up. Um, we'll give a minute for the phones to ring. Um, we'll go ahead and get your city manager's report, uh merit, and then if somebody calls in, we'll go back to them.
We have a number of meetings coming up, so I'd like to start with that. And the next meeting that the city council has is a special budget meeting. That'll be this Thursday at nine o'clock AM. Again, it'll be on the Zoom platform. There is another special budget workshop on May eleventh, also at nine o'clock AM. So I know our finance director is working on that and really um, it is getting, we're getting ready to post that agenda, I believe, tomorrow. Uh, the next regular city council meeting is on May seventeenth. And then the, the following one is on June seventh. The next planning commission date is on May eleventh at six o'clock PM. And the next Measure E meeting is still always out there in September, on September twenty-first. The next Runner Community Recreation and Park District meeting is on May fifth. So I have a few things that I've been working on for my verbal report. One, um, good news, and I did send an email to the council about this. Uh, FEMA, FEMA accepted our um letter of revision for the flood pilling mapping for Runner Creek. So as the council knows, this has been a ten-year, over ten million dollar, multiple grant funding sources to. Pay for flood control and habitat improvements on Runner Creek. So they sent out the notice, they um issued the maps in draft form, they. Will become effective uh on September third. And so one of the things that we're thinking about doing is there's. People are gonna have a number of questions such as, do I still have to pay flood insurance now? Will I get reimbursed for the flood insurance that I already paid up until that date? And so we're going to be working on a webpage to go on the city's website with a number of frequently asked questions. We also have some questions of our own. If there's houses that still have a portion of the channel on them, but the flood elevation is less than their foundation. And if they need to do an elevation certificate, do we wanna have the city surveyor or a cons- or a consulting surveyor? Go through and do all the elevation certificates for the hundred or so, hundred to hundred and fifty-five parcels that um would. Be out of the flood plain. I think it's only fifty-five homes. So how can we finish this project and deliver that benefit to our residents and clearly communicate? Um, what they wanna know. And again, we get a lot of calls on this, so um just know that we are working on some communication to. Let the public know uh what's happening and try to answer their questions in advance. So again, September third is the effective date. And we'll be moving forward with that uh information campaign in the near, near future. Um, I've continued to work on SB thirteen eighty-three compliance and think about how we proceed with that. Uh, I was really pleased that uh a number of the other agencies do wanna work together in a collaborative form. And so. We will be uh working with a number of the other cities to. See what we can do to demonstrate a reasonable effort and ultimately get a compliance uh timeline or schedule with Cal Recycle and identify specifically what efforts are needed. And there may be a study to identify the long-term reuse for organic materials. And that's one study that we're considering. Pairing with, but those studies like that have a price. Uh, one of the things I've also been thinking about is solid waste franchise agreements. I'll be bringing that back to the council in the near future. And considering some changes to the franchise agreement, including uh addition of LE, Local Enforcement Authority fees. possibly raising the franchise fee to pay for some of the 1383 compliance and consideration of whether or not the city participates in the household hazardous waste household hazardous waste program with Humboldt Waste Management Authority. So those are the things that I'm thinking about. And also there's a, there may be a decrease based on some of our actual recyclable tonnage for recology. So I'm expecting to bring that to the next city council meeting. I made a presentation to the Eel River Recovery Project last Friday evening and shared the city's efforts on enhancing creeks, the John Campbell Memorial Greenway, and a future riverfront park, and just the emphasis that staff has had on the Riverwalk area and how the city interacts with Eel River. So it was fun to be able to present that and think about that. And it's on the Eel River Recovery Project website. If anybody wants to take a look at that presentation, or I'd be happy to share the PowerPoint with you. Our deputy city engineer and I will be presenting to the Humboldt County Farm Bureau on May 6th. There's been some questions from the agricultural community about our wastewater project. So Brendan and I are going to go to the farm bureau and share with them where we're at in our project and answer any questions that they have this Thursday at three o'clock. Also been discussing permitting with for city events with other city managers and Dr. Hoffman from Humboldt County Environmental Health. And one of the things that it looks like is going to happen is that the city will have the ability to permit events at venues where there are state guidelines for those type of permits. So if you think about the rodeo in event that can be a seated venue, we we will have the ability very soon to be able to review and be the approver for those where there are state guidelines. Other events like where we have big downtown gatherings, it's a little more difficult. There's not specific guidelines. So some of those will still require a review and approval by County Environmental Health. But for example, Auto Expo, where they do have certain things that there are guidelines, we may be able to permit some of the activities and only the bigger gatherings run through County Environmental Health. So just be aware, it's going to be a huge burden on staff to be able to carefully review those and make sure that all the guidelines are being met. We've listed Cameron Mall, our Parks Director is a point of contact. Our city clerk has set up an events and Fortuna email address that people will be able to submit their applications to. And so our city clerk, our Parks Director, and I will all be monitoring that. We're going to do our best to move those permits through as quickly as possible. And although indoor events are discouraged by California Department of Public Health, private indoor events are now allowed to be held if there are safety modifications that put in place. So one of the things that that means is that we can now rent our indoor facilities, such as the River Lodge or Monday Club, provided that they're for private gatherings and they comply with the California Department of Public Health safety guidelines. So demand has been low. We have had one-person event, one in-person event at the River Lodge. And so we're looking forward to at least being able to allow those facilities to host some private events and people to proceed with things like weddings and others that that they can put together a reasonable safety plan. So with that, that concludes my staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, for merit. All right. Seeing that, Sienna, do we have any public call in on the cannabis issue?
I don't see any.
Okay, so we'll move on to future agenda items. Anyone? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move on to city council reports. Mike Johnson.
Well, it's a small report this time. The way the month of April fell, the and all it did not. Anyways, I only had one item this last period. As Mike was out of town, I served as the alternate on the Redwood Coast Energy Authority. And the big item that evening was the contract for biomass power from the Humboldt Sawmill Company. And that was approved with a provision for the Sawmill Company and the community group to see if they could find some alternate uses for some of the biomass so that it was not solely being burned as time went on. And so, but it was approved. It provides a stable power source for the county and for the community choice aggregate customers of RCEA. And that was my sole item to report on this month.
All right. Thank you, Mike. My closey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I really thank you, Mike Johnson, for attending that meeting. That vote was important. So I was glad that you were able to attend. I have nothing else to report. I've got a LAFCO meeting coming up on the 19th. And RCEA coming up on the 27th. So I will report back on those. And other than having a little bit of a tan from my Mexico trip, that's all I've got.
All right. Thank you. Jeremy.
To report on FBIT, the California Relief Grant Round Six wraps up tomorrow. And FBIT has been helping local businesses and business owners to secure those funds. The SBA Restaurant Revitalization Grant Round is opening up. And FBIT will be assisting businesses as needed to help local restaurant owners to secure funding. FBIT board and staff are using these times right now to update manuals, job descriptions, expectations, and the best ways to serve the business community. And they'll be actually ramping up and having multiple board meetings per week, per month in the near future in order to do the work of the of the needs that were identified during our retreat and keep that momentum going. So we'll be holding meetings the first and third Thursdays of the month at 3:30 via Zoom, 3:30 to 5:00. And we're going to get some heavy lifting done here coming up. Nothing to report on Parks and Rec. And then I might ask you, Madam Mayor, I saw an appointment as a loan committee member for REDEC. I heard that I was going to be approved, but I didn't get the official word. So do you know if your executive team made that approval?
Yes, you were approved at our meeting last Monday night. So you were
Awesome. All right. So yeah, so that's another another hat I get to wear now is to also support local businesses as they come to REDEC for special funding needs. So I'm excited to join that group. Other than that, I have nothing else to report. Oh, excuse me, I do. We're still needing a city of city position filled at the FBIT board. I believe the city manager and the FBIT Executive Director are working together to put that advertisement on the on the city website, much like we do with our commission seats and other seats. So we'll make that application process even easier for the public moving forward. So anybody interested in the business community that that owns a business, manages a business, has significant ties to a business, we are looking for enthusiasm and positive input and contribution to our revitalized and refocused board.
All right. Thank you, Jeremy. Tammy.
Okay, well, I'm happy to report that the board supervisors approved Measure Z funds to fully fund our school resource officer and our drug task force officer. I have not got the word on the radios that we asked for. Chief, have you heard anything on those?
No, I I haven't. Mayor Pro-Trent, it hasn't been finalized. That was right at the threshold for the cutoff. So there were three projects that came in right at that threshold and it appeared at first glance that the radio project would probably be approved just based on the fact that the amount for that project out of the three would still fit into the monies that were available this year. So we're still waiting to get final word on that. But I have not received an update this week.
Thank you. And that's all I have to report.
All right. Thanks, Tammy. So I had a REDEC meeting and I'm glad Jeremy is going to be on the loan committee because he is the alternate for REDEC. And so when I am not on this council anymore, Jeremy will be able to slide right into there if he's still interested. And Hobson Humboldt, as you know, gives back to the community. And although we didn't have an event, we did give away our three $1,000 scholarships this month. Leslie Costalano on the City Council for Eureka reached out and thanked us for our contribution of our CDBG funds to their Eureka projects and thanked us for keeping our money local. There is a ceremony for the National Day of Prayer on Thursday at the Vets Building from 12 to 1:00. And I hope that you can all join us. Mike Johnson will be speaking and myself and Pastor Mark Sights, Cheryl Wells, Mike Gibbs will be singing. So you know it'll be good. Michelle Bushnell, I don't know who Terry Augustine is, but he is also one of the speakers. So I hope that the public will join us. I hope that all you guys will join us. And I'm really excited that they are put together a program for that. So with that, we have a closed session item conference with real property negotiator pursuant to section 54956.8 of the government code, vacant land along Eel River and 1320 Riverwalk Drive. The negotiating parties are city manager Merritt Perry for the city of Fortuna and Land MK as negotiating parties. Under negotiation are the price and terms of payment. So with that, we can entertain a motion to move to closed session.
I'll make a motion to adjourn this closed session.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, Sienna.
Do you want to say? Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tim Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. All right. Do your thing. We'll take a couple of minutes here. Hi, Amber Lee.
I want to say hi to Sienna's baby.
Say hi, hi. How's it going, Diana?
All right. Have a wonderful night.
Diana.
You too. Thanks. So we'll wait for studio control to get off here.